All right, I'd like to call and order a regular meeting of the Perry Carnegie Library Board. Roll call please.
Wines, Marshall, White.
Here.
Coffee, Brown.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Stroller.
Here.
Do you declare a quorum. I'd like to make a question with Bill Stroller.
Join me in prayer, please. Dear most heavenly father, I thank you for the opportunity to gather here and conduct the city's business. I ask that you guide us and protect us this evening. Give us the ability to make decisions that will better the city. I pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Thanks, Bill. Item one, the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Anyone here to talk about the library? Nope. All right, item five, presentation of oral preliminary court.
Hi.
Good.
In December, we had thirteen teenagers receive a book bag. Signups for the February book bags start January twentieth and run through February first. You can sign up in person or on our website. Each bag contains a book, library book and goodies. You need a library card and you must be between twelve and eighteen years of age. Santa came to the Perry Carnegie Library on December first. Kids of all ages, including adults. Came to get their picture taken upstairs with Santa, we provided wraps and snacks. That was cool. They were, it was just a long, long line. And Santa kept a moving and everyone loved Santa. So that was fun. We had a great turnout for the first Perry Page Turners Book Club, meeting that Sheila Loring is hosting at the library. Our first book for discussion is The Rosie Project. We meet again on February fourteenth at six P M. You are welcome to attend even if you missed the organizational meeting. Men are definitely welcome. We have copies of The Rosie Project available at the library. Other copies may be available via interlibrary loan or overdrive through the library. Of course, you are also free to purchase a book yourself, as many other members are likely to do. Contact Sheila Loring at five eight zero three zero seven two nine one one for information about the book club or being included in the text or emails. Contact the library for questions on how to obtain the book or for information about upcoming titles. I met with six library directors from the Small Libraries Network on January thirteenth in Cushing. We discussed summer reading program ideas, large special programs, state aid ideas, and interlibrary loan processing. Any questions?
Heard the book club was here.
Oh, we expected like five, maybe ten. We had over seventeen people. It was awesome. So, and Sheila was great. She's led a book discussion before, so she knows what she's doing. And it's not going to be like scholarly where we're here to learn. It's going to be informal and funny.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. In your new business? Motion, Senator.
Summer.
Second. Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
Coffee. Brown.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the City Council of City Perry, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at six nineteen. Roll call please.
Wines. Marshall. White.
Here.
Coffee. Brown.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Cold Iron.
Here.
Stroller.
Here, thank you. Item one is the consent agenda. There's three items on the consent agenda for your approval.
Motion's approved.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
White.
Yes.
Brown. Williams.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the city agenda. Okay, we're gonna hold you over to the city manager's comments, okay?
Okay.
Anyone else? Item five, proclamation accommodation was forced and required by the governing body. Item six, city manager's report and monthly project update.
Counsel in front of you is this legislative update. I attended the City Managers Association of Oklahoma Winter Conference in Edmonds last Wednesday and Thursday. And on Thursday, Executive Director of the Oklahoma Municipal League, Mike Fina, presented this as their priorities for this year. There's, there's a number of them here. Some make sense, some not so much. But as we get into the legislative session, O M L puts out every week a update of what the status of the bills are as they go through the process. So unlike last year's in the past where we have not done that, I'd like to send that out to you. At the very beginning, it would be rather voluminous, maybe fifteen pages or so. And then as we go into the session, it gets less, more, fewer pages and fewer pages. So it's, it's interesting reading if you have the time to do that. Also, there are times when there is a bill that goes contrary to what the priorities are from the Oklahoma Municipal League. And sometimes we will get a, a request to contact our senator or representative. And a lot of times that helps. Sometimes it doesn't, but we try to participate, we as a city try to participate as much as possible. So there may be times during this legislative session that we may send you a, an email asking for your thoughts or to help maybe contact your senator or your representative. Usually, I don't ever know about those until the day before the deadline, the bill comes up. So we try to get those out as fast as possible. Any questions about the legislative session and the legislative priorities page?
Debbie.
Hello. It's now the New Year's and I haven't heard from anybody in a while. You guys, I was hoping to hear from somebody soon. I have a couple of questions that I would like to know. I see that you guys spent another twelve hundred dollars over in the area for a... Did you get it right? I don't know. But you paid twelve hundred dollars for something to the engineer and we don't get a report of that anymore. We don't get to hear what it's for or anything. And I don't know. Well, one thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents for drainage evaluation at Second and Maple. Another evaluation. And I just was wondering about that and why nothing's getting done still. We're in year four now. You know, March is coming, rain is coming, flooding's coming. We haven't done anything. Nothing's changed over there. It's been since November since we talked to anybody. Can I find out why, when, how come, anything?
It's your section. I was just making sure you didn't have anything to say before.
No, no.
As a, Mr. Coffee's not here, but as a committee, we're still working on, and, and that was to get some elevation numbers on the streets there is what those, that twelve hundred was for. I think, right, that's, was the survey for that? Okay, so, numbers that we didn't have, just to find out more information. And, and I think there's some, some ongoing to try and... Somebody mentioned a pond, and I'm not familiar with anything with a pond as far as, and there's been no recommendation yet. And we'd hope to get a letter out soon to probably have another meeting with, with everybody in the neighborhood. Is it, I mean, I'm not, I speak out of turn from what, but we're, we're still trying to get a recommendation.
Yeah, because it's kind of hard to get all the facts when so many of the people moved out of the neighborhood whose houses got water in them. And so many of the people that are living in the house now don't know about the water problem before. And they know that the houses were being remodeled when I first came to all these meetings four years ago when I started this. So a lot of those people have moved out that had all those damages besides me over and over and over again. And I got a couple more questions if that would be okay. I want to know who the administrator was when the addition was put in.
Who the what was?
Administrator was when the addition was put in, because everybody has a blame game here. And I need to find out. It needs to stop. It needs to be fixed. I get, you know, I'm not even going to that. And who was the engineer that signed off on that addition over there? Why, when drainage was talked about, because I know people that are related to the people that built it. And there's been a lot of people looking into this. Believe it or not, there's a lot of people in Perry that are concerned over there. You would be surprised at messages and the emails that I get, and I'm not even the mayor. I wasn't nobody. And people come into my house that are talking about how wrong this is, all of it. And how wrong it is the way that I get treated and talked to. I really just want to live my best life, but I don't want my home to flood again. Period. I just don't want to go through it again. And I want some of these facts because when it does, I'm going to make sure all my ducks are in a row and it's on. You know, I don't know what, and he's been here long enough through all of it when it all first started. I've got people that have came since way back when Norman Boone was coming and Jim Davis was coming. And I can bring Hank Knighton down here. He can tell you the times he's been out there with the city. We can go back years. So things that get put on the minute aren't correct. We would have never bought a home that flooded. We might, you put, we might not buy a home. We would not have bought a home that flooded.
Okay, I'll tell you what. You're not going to attack.
I'm not attacking. I'm telling what was in the minutes and what was said.
All right.
I'm tired of you talking to me like I'm crap.
I'm not, I've never, I always respect you.
No, you don't. You don't respect anybody.
I agree, but you're not going to attack our staff.
Do you mind if I say something else?
Anyway.
I do want, I want to assure you that the committee, I can't answer the two questions that, because that was well before I've...
I'm not gonna, I'm just not, minutes aren't correct.
I apologize. Yeah. So, but I do want to say that the committee is still working on it. And we're, you know, the goal there is to make a recommendation back to this body. And, and, and I assure you, it's a constant, we're constantly talking about it and we need, needed time to get, and hope to get communication out to you guys. It's not a real easy way to send out communication. So I do apologize that it's taken this long. But I, we do want to get communication. And I apologize to the body too as well that, that we haven't got a recommendation to you.
That's why, that's all I ask once, you know. So I know at least, I know you guys are working on it because I don't trust them. They lied, both of them. And they have both lied to me. Period. If you guys give me your word, I'll go for your word until you prove me wrong. That's all I have.
We will get some.
But once you lie to me, then I don't have a choice but to go on to another way.
Well, we'll get a recommendation back as soon as, as soon as we, yeah, we'll wait for an information.
Okay, because you have my phone number, you have my email, put everything on that piece of paper. You need to get ahold of me. You can knock on my door. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item seven, Chief Financial Officer's report.
I guess you didn't see my hand.
What?
I said, I gather you didn't see my hand.
I, I didn't. I apologize. You can speak.
All I got to say is, like I said before, we're going on the forty-fifth year with no drainage. Forty-five years it's taken to us to get even this far with people. For that, I thank you because this will be the, probably the first time, maybe the only time that I say thank you to me, you, Mr. Stroller. And yes, I know your dad from a long time ago, but I didn't know you were his son. But all I can say, simply say is that thank you for bringing it up, that we needed a committee. And whoever first said, I believe it was our city attorney that said, we need to get that taken care of. And you said, we need a committee. And then people said, we, we want that committee, which I thank you for. And thank you. Now, a person is only as good as their word. And that goes for all of you because you represent Perry. All I'm asking is, what are you going to do? What's your legacy going to be? That you helped to get this taken care of after forty-five years? Finally, finally, we get something done after forty-five years? That will be a big gold star for you. Forgive me, but it will be. What's your legacy going to be as mayor? That you finally got this taken care of too? I hope so. I don't know. But forty-five years, and I still have a, a, a street problem. And there's still a lot of problems in this town that should have been corrected a long time ago if we had officers to enforce it, which for some strange reason we don't. No parking signs don't mean a thing to me. U-turns in front of the, the library doesn't, I'm not library, post office doesn't mean anything. It, it's just unreal what goes on in this town. And people don't know what stop signs are. Have you noticed that? Even coming here tonight, I saw two people run, one ran a red light and the other ran a red stop sign. Oh, round that curve they go and no problem. That's what kind of people we have here because we don't enforce it. That's why we have those people. And, and it just drives me crazy because I'm not used to this. And back in my day when I grew up here, it was all different, completely different. Every store in this city, building in the city had a store in it. It was running good. And we had everything. Look at it now. Look at it now. That's why we have you, our councilman, is to help us get that city back to where it should be. We are forced to go out of town. Where do, where does a woman find a pair of heels? Where does a woman find a cocktail dress? Or even a nice dress to go to church in? There isn't a place. Why? Why? You know, we are forced to go out of town. I can't buy groceries here. You know why? It, it pays me to go to Stillwater. There's Aldi's there, there's Walmart there. You know, I can get things cheaper. Here, my goodness, I only get a couple of things for what it costs me to take a whole bags, a bunch of bags to my car over there. It pays me to go there to buy groceries. And I, I, I don't understand that. We didn't used to have that. We didn't have a fight because of, they owned this, they're, this is city-owned. People in the city run this. Well, if they're running it, they're putting all their money in their pocket because those stores are, are charging us way too much for groceries. I bet you won't let somebody else come in. That's what I've been told.
That's, that's not true. We worked, we've worked very diligently to try to get more grocery stores and more department stores here. I apologize.
Well, that wasn't what I was told whenever I called and, and, and talked to somebody in the city. In our city, at our city hall.
We've gone, oh, this is, there's, of course, it, it was a citizen, but brought even the CEO of Homeland here. I mean, we've had meetings with them to discuss things, how to make it better and prices were one, I mean, and creating competition as well as...
That's Kroger. Uh huh.
Well, there have been no conversations with Kroger.
Well, Kroger owns Homeland.
Okay. That's new.
I'm sorry. I, I know that because I've dealt with them.
Okay.
But, yeah. And now, they're, they're more expensive in different places. And yes, I thought that whenever I moved back here, because I was gone for a while, whenever I moved back here, I was just so unpleased with everything. And the people especially because it seems to be the, pardon me for saying this, a clique going on in this community. And hey, yes, I've got family here and there's other people that I'm related to too. And yeah, there's people that I know. You know, I just talked to Mr. Brown because I know his father from way back. I'm sorry, that's about sixty or seventy years ago. I'm sorry, I'm old. But anyway, forty-five years it's taken you to wake up. And forgive me, we're not going to let you down. We're going to still be here. Like I told, I had, I called Mr. Pinnell, but he wasn't home, but the home, wasn't in his office, so I left a message. Then I went to the office to see if I could talk with him. He wasn't there that day. The next Monday, I was there at eleven o'clock. And he wasn't there. And they didn't know where he was or what he was doing. Or, you know, when he would be in or anything. And I thought, our city manager and nobody knows where you're at? That doesn't sound like right. And the woman even said, he always tells us. And I go, well, he must have some lady or something, you know, just teasing on that. But anyway, and he found, he called me this morning and talked to me. And I, it floored me. And I thought, golly, he actually called me and he's talking to me. Then I think I must have raised my voice a little bit. He says, now, if you're going to, and he says, we'll just end this call. And I go, no, 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 I'm sorry. But he, I wanted to be on the agenda tonight with our problem. And he says, next, next council meeting, you're on the agenda. So I'm going to be on the agenda next council meeting.
I said, I hope that we have something for you to present.
Oh, that's right, the hope. Well, I hope so too. You forgive me when I say that because we're not going away. I've been here forty-five years.
I think you made that point. Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not going away at all. And if, if I do anything, I hope to do it as good as my parents did because my parents put something here in, in Perry that people are enjoying. And I hope that I get something taken care of in our neighborhood. Dad talked to, to Sorrells. He talked to the, the city manager back then. He talked to the mayor back then. And he talked to Hughes's and everybody. He knew from the very start because our house was the fourth house built. And he knew from the very start we were going to have a problem with water erosion. I mean, he was just a farmer, but farmers know about erosion. And if you don't know anything about water erosion, I, I ask you all to get started and learn about erosion, water erosion. Because no, you're right. We have a problem down there and we need you. And we really do need you. And we need to get something done about it. Because there's some houses that people move in and move out of and they don't know why they're sick. Mow them, they'll do. And they don't even know it's there. That's what it's from. And I know it means nothing to some of you because you don't live there. I've got an empty house across the street. I want one of you who don't think that we have a problem, come and live there. I really do. I want one of you to come and live there and see all the erosion and all the, the holes in their backyard and everything. Because they're are there. They're there. Now, one other thing, and Mr. Pinnell, this goes to you. I have one question and I want you to answer it. And please don't sit, don't just sit there and say nothing to me. I understand you're building a new home. Why is it not in Perry?
I'm not building a new home. I've lived in the same house for almost five years now. It is in Perry.
You rent that house? Yes.
I own that house.
You own that house?
I own that house. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Well, I was told that you're building a new home and it's not even in the state of Oklahoma.
I have an inheritance of two hundred acres that my mother left me when she passed. We are renovating that so I can pass that on to our daughter. If you don't like that, then I'm sorry.
No, I was just wondering why your new house wasn't being, I was told that you were building a new home.
I'm not sure that it's even in any of your business, actually.
Well, I just wanted to know why you wasn't building it in Perry. That's all. I've been told that you live in Edmond. Then somebody else said, no, he lives in Norman. He doesn't live here.
If I were you, I would check your sources.
Well, that's the reason I come to the...
I'm not really sure that, that an open forum is a place to take care of.
I know. But you see, you, you see it my way, please. You represent Perry. I, you know, we pay your wages. Us peons pay your wages. Everybody pays your wages. So yes, we need to know. If we hear something, I'm asking because I want to know the truth.
May I say something there? But that is something that we addressed before hiring Larry as our city manager because we didn't have, it stated that the city manager had to live within the city limits. And, and I think it got changed to within a mile or a mile and a half. But, but they do have to live within a mile.
Yeah, I know.
And that is something that we, that we changed before hiring him. So he had to move here to Perry too.
Well, I was just told that he rents a house here. That, that's what I was told, that he doesn't live here, that he lives in Edmond. And I think, that doesn't sound right because everywhere he could go, people have to live within the city limits to be in, yeah. That's all. I was just trying to make sure that I wasn't telling people wrong. If I said anything about it. I know it's none of our business, but I just wanted to know if you were building a new house, why not in Perry?
Well, in, in his defense a little bit, he can't, he can't, we hired him from out of state. And if, if some point he wants to retire, he can choose to retire wherever he would like to retire.
Right. Well, you know, that's what I figured out that, that might be, his retirement home. Yes, I thought about that. I was going to tease him and, and, and say something else, but I won't.
But that is something a previous council wanted to make sure that whoever sat in that position did live here.
Yeah, that's good.
That is something we changed.
Because I've heard that, what'd you say, a, a mile or a mile and a half out of city limits?
It, it was, in, in the original charter, they had to live in the city limits. And then we, then we took it to vote of the people because we had a city manager that lived five or six miles outside town. And, and her and her husband had lived there for years and years and years.
Right.
And so the ordinance, I don't believe, I don't remember exactly how it stated if you, at that time, if you lived there more than ten years or something. I don't remember what it was, Bryce, that, that you could be allowed to continue if you were the city manager. But as soon as, as soon as the city didn't employ her anymore, then we went back and, and changed the charter so the city manager had to live within a mile or something of the city. So the, the one was actually made an exception for, for the city manager that we hired at that time because she lived east of town.
Mm-hmm.
And we wanted her to continue to go live in her home. So that, that's the situation with that.
Well, that's the way it's always been wherever I've lived, is that you had to be in the city limits. Same thing with the fire department and the police department. That's where I've lived. They had to be in the city limits to be employed by them. Because that was city, 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 city. The county is the county.
Yeah.
So we got that taken care of. And he says that, well, that we might have something next. I don't know. Is that going to be a committee meeting that we're having?
Well...
Or is it going to be where you have the engineer in to talk to us?
It's going, it's going to depend on when we get our information. That's what we're waiting on. That's what we're waiting on.
Well, that's something that he's also told me this morning.
So just know that it's being worked on. We haven't forgot about you.
I apologize to you as well that we didn't get communication.
But you've already apologized to me, so that's fine.
Yes.
Yes, all I got to say is, if we have something, I mean, the three weeks to the end of the month in November, we didn't hear anything. All of December, we didn't hear anything. I know there was Thanksgiving, there was Christmas, there was New Year's Eve and all that, and we chalked that up, but here it is the seventeenth day of January, and we still hadn't heard, even if we're working on it, we're getting closer for anything. And as I told you, you know, give me a holler, and fourth ring will go to my voicemail, and you can leave me a message. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome, and I'll be here next time too.
Anybody else? All right, item seven, Chief Financial Officer's report.
Well guys, we've made it halfway through the year, and I will hit a couple of big pieces. Told you, one of my biggest concerns was inflation and the CPI and whether those numbers finished up, you know? Our year finished up, two, six point nine percent was December's number, ten, for a twelve month number, our two-year is about fifteen point nine percent, so very significantly high number, you know, we're still very high as far as totals go. Here's the better side, and the offset to that, and the pieces that we probably ought to be happiest about. Our sales tax and use tax are both up for the year. As you look at those percentages, you know, we're almost twenty-eight percent, well, almost right at thirty percent ahead of where we should be in total dollars collected compared to last year, which will be even higher compared to budget. The significant portion of those dollars are embedded in a construction line items and the construction sit codes. So those are the pieces that we kind of have to see what construction continues on in the future, but that is a significant piece of our increase this year. Probably not going to be able to hold that over in next year's projections, because I just don't expect that we will have the same level of construction, at least what's on the agendas right now, to be built. So anyhow, that is, that's what's driving our increases, that's really where the big dollars are from that standpoint. As far as expenses go, all of our departments are within their budget, or what we would expect their budget to be revised for things like the fire truck purchase or the land purchases and those kind of things, which we've talked about all in the prior months. There's no significant new items there. Hotel motel tax, which was collected in November, remitted to us in December, so the start of that Thanksgiving holiday, it was actually down. We're at eleven thousand dollars on hotel motel tax collections, which is not exactly where we want to be. The other side note that we've been talking about, and kind of the piece that I've been keeping you all informed of, is the power cost adjustment. If you remember, on our electric side, we were always talking, it's not necessarily the money that we're making, but it's the extra wholesale cost we're having to pay to OMPA for our electricity. That number is back down. We're back down into that, it was one point two cents last month. Still, that's higher than what we want it to be in our adjusted numbers. Derek was on the council, Bill was on the council, you know, our goal, and I spent quite a bit of time with Earl Hicks, whatever, whatever, he was still alive, because he wanted that PCA number to be zero. I mean, his goal was for us to have a zero PCA, some months a positive, some months a negative, and the iterations that he went through, the calculations that we went back and forth on to get it there, you know, that was always our goal, and historically, that's where we've tried to be. I told you all over the last couple of years that based on the increases that we're seeing from OMPA, we're not going to stay at that zero, but we were always trying to keep it under one. So we're still over one cent in our PCA adjustment. Our goal, you know, hopefully, is that that number falls. That means that what we're paying to OMPA has gone down. And so at some point, maybe with natural gas prices and those kind of things adjusting, hopefully, we will get back closer to that PCA of zero, get back closer to one or under one, but I don't see that really changing in the long run. Bottom line, I said all of that to say that whenever you look at the electric department, you look at our wholesale cost of electricity, and that's why we break that out, you know, I mean, at seventy-one percent, you can see that we are significantly higher, you know, I mean, almost a twenty percent increase over prior years in what we would have expected for wholesale electric costs. So that's a big driver in our revenues being up, but likewise, in the prices that our citizens are paying, you know, at the end of the day. So really, overall, though, numbers I think are really good, and that's really, for six months into the year, I told you whenever we adopted the budget, that we'll look in December, and that's when we may have to talk about, do we need to revise stuff? I'm good with where our utility rates are at this point, I'm good, especially with the sales tax collections, you know, they've exceeded even what I had projected. I knew we were going to be up, but these are even more than what I had expected whenever we adopted the budget, so we're sitting very good there. Any questions about financials?
Sales and use outside of construction, is that up, even, down?
We're, well, we're not outpacing inflation outside of construction, so...
But it is up?
It is up, yes. We're up five and three quarters, you know, so we're up, it's just, we're not, we're not as up as much as I would want us to be in a total piece. The other thing that I want to hit just real quick, because it came up in the discussion just a second ago, and the talk was about grocery stores, and getting more grocery stores in here and those kind of things. Guys, here's our predicament, and this is, I don't know if this has ever been explained from a global standpoint, but this is what we're facing related to additional grocery stores. Every grocery store wants about fourteen to fifteen million dollars in annual sales. That is a baseline market for where you go. Whenever you look at our market, our market is very similar, matter of fact, in all three of the communities we represent right here along I-35 going north, but our demand market, based on the population and based on the AGI, the income that people have for disposable income that would go into the grocery sector, we only have a demand of about seventeen to nineteen million dollars. Well, we've got one store that's filling the fourteen million dollar gap, that only leaves five million dollars of excess piece that another store looks at, whenever they're trying to price the market. Do we come in to Perry, or do we not, you know? And so from a global standpoint and an economic standpoint, that recruiting piece that we're trying to do is, we've got to find somebody that's willing to come in and compete to take away part of that fourteen million dollars, so that they can make their fourteen million whenever they walk in. And if we can't ever prove that we've got this demographic that gets us over that fourteen million, and our population will never get us at this point to a twenty-eight million dollar number, which would then drive two stores into coming in. So until population changes, or until AGI changes and disposable income for food changes, we're not going to get that extra competition necessarily in this market. This discussion has been had over and over again, not only here, but in a lot of our communities. And that piece is really what's driving our predicament related to recruiting more grocery stores. It's, there's just not volumes of sales, and at this point, the market doesn't deem enough of a margin. If that number were twenty-one, twenty-two million, then it's worth coming in and competing, because if I'm the only store in a twenty-one or twenty-two million dollar market, and I only need fourteen million, my profit margins are so much better, I can make all the money I need to make. But if I'm sitting here at fourteen and I'm only fighting over another four or five million, even if I got it, that four or five million might not be worth the cost that it is to lose for however many years it takes for me to be the sole operator. So I hope that maybe gives you a little bit of a numbers explanation of what we're really trying to address related to grocery stores and related to recruiting all that piece.
I guess that means we're not getting an holidays. I heard that yesterday, they were clearing land for a holiday.
I'm, I'm, well, be news, be news, ma'am.
That's new to us.
But...
It's new to us.
Okay.
So, you know, I think, I think when you say that, Russ, things change with times. And I can remember when I was a kid, there was JCPenney's and several different stores here in town when I was a kid, and they had the clothing opportunities that she was talking about, you know? And I think over time, that in all communities our size, that starts to dry up, because the younger generation, even my age and Curtis's, and we don't mind going somewhere, we have ten or fifteen different options to go shopping, and so where some families don't want that, they want to do it here, and to try to get those people to stay here in town to shop, and I feel like once you lose that, it's hard, it's difficult to ever get anything to come back, you know? But times have changed, it's just not the same as it used to be. You know, my granddad used to sell groceries here in town, and I think he told me there was eight grocery stores on the square in the thirties. And so, it's tough.
Well, I mean, walk down the street in New York City, you've got one every other block, you know, but it's population driven, and it's local income driven. That's what we're fighting, and that's what we have to...
Different sized blocks, there's a whole, a whole lot of different things there.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, good evening.
Talking about grocery stores, there used to be Safeway and M&amp;W.
Yes.
You remember them?
H&amp;P.
And Galloway's.
I don't know that one.
So that was three, that was three that was here in the city.
All right, any questions for Russ? Thank you, Russ, I appreciate it. Item number eight, review, receive and accept the FY 2021-22 audit by CBEW Professional Group LLP, ending on June 30th, 2022. Laura Morgan is here with CBEW to explain our audit.
Hello, I'm Laura Morgan with CBEW, as you just mentioned. We want to start off by saying thank you for choosing us to work on and present your audit again for fiscal year 22. It's been several years, and we've been very happy. On a side note, since I actually do work on this audit, everybody's super friendly, which is a plus. To go somewhere, they're always very accommodating. If we have any questions, they're getting as fast as they can. So that's actually very refreshing. So we conducted your audit with audit standards set forth and generally accepted the United States, and they're set forth by the Comptroller Journal of the United States. We're happy to announce you guys had a very clean audit opinion this year. We had no financial misstatements, or, you know, no misstatements in your financials, everything with your internal controls and procedures was right on point, we saw no issues there either. In your audit, it comes notice on page seven, that your changes in net position for the year, for fiscal year 22, you had an increase in net position of three million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, which is a little over a million more than you did for fiscal year 21. Your revenues went up about fifteen percent compared to the prior year. Some of that was due to the grants you got, you got the CARES Act, I think you had airport fund and airport improvement funds, and then you had the electric revenue was up quite a bit from the ice storm in February of 21. Your expenses also went up about ten percent. A lot of that was due to the ice storm and your cost of electric for the city. So you did have a net increase of about a million dollars. On page thirteen, it's just more of a statement of activities, it shows the expenses for the different funding programs and the program net revenues as well. And I do believe continues on to page fourteen, just going over governmental activities and your business type activities. You were not a single audit this year, which is nice. I can't remember off the top of my head if you had a lot of funds that carried over to fiscal year 23.
Yes, yes. We will have the expenditures this year of our armpit money.
Yeah, so ARPA fund, yeah. And I do the single audit, so I will be single first again. Are there any questions that I can help answer about the audit?
Guys, I will hit in your desk and at your place, the summary of, so this is the financial side of what goes on. They're also required to issue what is the SASB 14 letter, which is just the extra internal control. Do you want to address this, or?
Oh, go ahead.
So...
She can go all the way.
We should get your hip talk all the time.
They get to hear me talk all the time. Bottom line, this is the final communication that the auditor makes to the governing body about were there any issues, and it really covers seven different areas in which there potentially are or could have been issues. The nice thing, not only has she told you that we have an unmodified opinion and that we didn't have anything, should have been an extra letter, it was actually...
Well, there's this, but is it about the same thing as this, is what I was going to ask you?
No, there's two. That is the audit opinion, which is an unmodified opinion, which says that all the numbers in here are correct. This piece addresses the other items that you want to know that are outside the financial piece. And it just says, you know, what, did they encounter any problems with us? What were our estimates? Where did we, where might we have had disagreements between something? I guess what I'm going to say is, everything that they received for their numbers is what effectively ends up in here, and there were no, this SASB 14 letter says, everything went smooth. Those were the good things. We don't have any communication pieces that we need to make to you on top of what was the financial statement report. So this, actually, I'm happier with this part of the letter than I am with the numbers of the audit, because you got to get the numbers of the audit day in and day out. This is the letter I want you to read and realize.
I'm shaking your head, you agree with what you said.
This is good.
Yeah, that is good. Yeah, anything that we would have had, they were just minor adjustments, and we did those, we just communicated just some adjusting journal entries, and that was it. There was nothing major outstanding this year, which is really nice.
Any questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
Do we need a motion to accept?
Yeah, please.
Motion to receive review and accept fiscal year 2021-22 audit, second.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Item nine, we're going to continue this, there's been some language changes in the agreement, so Bryce says he'll have it to us at the next meeting, so you get a motion to continue it to the next meeting, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Copy. Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Item ten, consider approval of the CBG grant administration agreement, the part hill to be administered by Marita Ward, to apply for funding for an emergency vehicle and equipment building to be used by the city, fire and EMS department. We've got some different changes and different ideas on this, so we need a motion to continue it also, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Item eleven, consider reappointment to the Perry Planning Commissioners, including Chairman Marvin DeMent until January 24, Mike Unstead until January 24, Jim Franklin until January of 26, Sherry Honeycutt until January 26, Brad Marshall until January 26, or make such appointments as appropriate.
I would like to make that for us to reappoint those that are standing and listed here to serve again.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Does it not need to be individually?
Yeah, we probably ought to do it individually. Would you make a motion for Marvin DeMent? I mean, just so that if somebody wanted to vote, no...
I make a motion for Marvin DeMent to give me a chairman until January of 2024.
Second.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
I make a motion for Mike Unstead to serve until January 2024.
Second.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
I make a motion that we retain Jim Franklin until January of 2026.[1764.54]
Second.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
I make a motion that we retain Sherry Honeycutt until January of 2026.
Second.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
I make a motion that we retain Brad Marshall until January of 2026.
Second.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes. Thank you.
I would say that I talked to Sherry Honeycutt today and she was telling me how much she enjoyed serving on that committee. And she said, you know, it's just now and she beginning to get a handle on what she's really doing. And when you finally get there, you really enjoy it. Would like to continue, you know, to do that. So that was kind of enlightening to me about what they do.
Yeah, I think they all take it pretty serious.
Yes, they do.
All right, item number 12, consider approval of invoice for HFG Architecting amount of $31,680 for fees and $670.01 in cost and reimbursement expenses pertaining to the schematic design phase of the Perry Hospital renovation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Item 13, authorized payment of contractor application and payment number five to Horseshoe Construction Incorporated for work performed on the citywide sanitary sewer Phase Five capital improvement project in amount of $25,432.75 upon furnishing of lien release forms and exception to the project, except for the project.
I will point out, there still is money owed here, so we won't be accepting the project. We'll defer this payment.
Okay, so are they, are they done with the project, Larry?
Yeah, the project's finished, but we have some lien releases and some paperwork, so we don't want to accept it yet. And we're on the means, let's just pay this bill.
Okay, so have we, have we, have we inspected it and we're happy with the project?
Yes, Willie Cheats has, Co. has, yes.
All right.
But-
All right. We're just paying the bill, we're not accepting the project yet.
That's correct.
So motion to pay invoice for $25,432.75 to Horseshoe?
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes, thank you. Item 14, consider setting initial advertising rates for the Perry BMAC Baseball Complex. I'll let Bryce talk about this, but I wasn't aware. We sold, we sold the sponsorship on the scoreboards. And I wasn't aware that was a three-year deal.
You're the only one that was on cancel then.
I know.
Well, we did, and we had sold some other things. The idea here is we're putting out kind of a package deal, trying to see who will buy what. So we've got, you know, you get a field, you get a scoreboard, you get two banners. And you do that for a five-year period at $5,000 per year. Now, the other one was a scoreboard for three years at, at $10,000. But it wasn't per year, was it per year?
Say it again.
I think it was $10,000 period.
It was $10,000 period. You know, we want to see how this does before we break this down and have, you know, individual banners or individual scoreboards. We just want to put this out early, see if somebody might want to grab these, these up. And then come back to you and tell you what the, what occurred and then make further recommendations with respect to advertising. This was done in a meeting with, with Lee and, and the city clerk. And of course, the manager and everybody felt that it would be best to go out this way to bring you those results and then to make other recommendations, so.
Has there been any talk on who would do the upkeep on like the banners, just weather wise, like weathering and?
Uh, they would all be, it would all be, it would all be new. It would all be new and that, and there's cost in that, you know, there's cost in everything. So, but I don't know that it went any further than that.
Lee stated that each year he would evaluate the, you know, the banners to see if they needed any improvement. If not, that 5,000 would just be a bonus that year because he wouldn't have any other costs to go along with that. The initial cost is going to be the first year.
But we would, we would be purchasing banners.
He would replace those.
Yeah, I think that we, if they're paying that sponsorship, we should be replacing the banners, you know.
Yeah.
That's what I was-
And we'll see how we do and bring back the results.
And we did just the banners in 2018, 19, and they worked fine. We sold, I think I remember, probably all the two locations. And the locations are different by how you come into the park. If you, if there's more exposure as you come into the park, then those are higher than if they are way on the east side.
Got you. Do we need any, anything for today?
Oh, I think just I'll recommend the soliciting of this advertising package and bring the results back to you.
So much.
Yeah.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes. Item 15, you knew the business and you used to come before the council this evening. Item 16-
Mayor, if you want to recess at this point and then do the other two meetings and come back to this. Because, you know, you were speaking to that issue, I think that you could do that. Just recess this meeting and then go to, and then go to-
He changes mind, imagine that.
Well, no, that's what he wanted to do.
He's talking about going to executive session.
I thought we weren't going to executive session.
Oh, no, I changed my mind.
I told you, I tried to tell you, listen.
Then why do we meet for these things and talk about it?
Did we not have a conversation?
We overruled him.
We weren't going to executive session tonight.
Okay.
So, so- Consider convening executive session to confer on a matter pertaining to economic development in the city. Perry discussed the proposal remodel and extend the lease of the Perry, or the hospital and thereby approve the economic development in the city as public disclosure of the proposal will interfere with the development and implementation of the proposal. Motion to go into executive session, please. Roll call.
White?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Calderon?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes. Yes.